Welcome, everybody, to the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting for the twenty-second of February twenty twenty-two. I just want to shout out that this is the most twos that we'll ever hear in a date, so let's celebrate.
Um, yeah.
Okay, so this is the briefing portion of the meeting. Um, let's start with a roll call and access check. Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Brown. Mr. Burton Falk.
Present.
Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Commissioner Dingo.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Mondo, present, and Commissioner O'Neill. All right, again, welcome to the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting briefing means that cases are heard as a preliminary public presentation for initial questions by the commission. There is no public testimony at this time. Uh, welcome to our presenters. Clearly describe which slide you're presenting to to assist those who may be, uh, participating via audio. We have one item up for briefing today. Item A is DCP ZDR twenty twenty-one thirteen eight two nine, address three three zero North Shore Drive. It's a new enclosure over existing outdoor dining area adjacent to North Shore Drive in the North Shore neighborhood, and Mr. Kuna.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. I'll pause for a moment until while we let our applicants into the into the meeting. I believe there are only two attendees in the meeting at the moment. Hello, Dan, if we could do a mic check real quick to make sure your audio works.
Sure, how would you like? I'll turn on my, okay, to turn on my art, my video?
Sure, that's okay.
And then my audio works.
And then we can check with Douglas as well.
Hello.
Great, okay, so I'll do a briefing report and then we'll, um, we'll share the presentation. Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. This is application DCP ZDR twenty twenty-one one three eight two nine. This is an application for use of an approximately eight hundred square foot enclosure over the existing outdoor dining area adjacent to North Shore Drive. Uh, a previous project development plan, uh, PDP number eighteen dash PDP dash zero zero three one was approved by the Planning Commission on October ninth, twenty eighteen for an enclosure over a portion of the existing dining area. Located in the pedestrian way between North Shore Place one and two, a copy of PDP number eighteen dash PDP dash oh 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 three one in the clip Planning Commission presentation is included in your report. Uh, that enclosure for the approved, uh, PDP was not installed. Uh, this application proposes relocating the previously approved enclosure from the pedestrian way to the existing outdoor dining area adjacent to North Shore Drive. Apologize for my camera going off. It's not working at the moment. Um, in twenty twelve, the Planning Commission approved, um, PDP number twelve dash fifty-four with the conditions that the final design details of the outdoor seating areas, including the barrier between the seating in the adjacent walkway and any proposed cold weather enclosures be subject to design review and final review by Planning Commission. Uh, in this location, there's no registered community organization representing this area, therefore, no development activities meeting was required. Uh, the applicant worked through the staff review process, the staff design review process. Staff has no outstanding design concerns, and there are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment as part of this project. At this point, I will turn over the presentations to applicants.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, and I'm, I can share a screen, is that correct?
We will share the screen. Um, all you have to do is ask staff to proceed to the next slide.
Okay. Oh, okay, there we go.
There, there may be a slight delay just with.
Okay, great. You know, I, if it's okay, I would like to perhaps, before we talk about the surrounding area and how the the structure fits in, can we go to slide two or and would we, would we be able to come back to this, or do we have to take them in order?
Oh, I can, I can go back to slide, slide one or slide two whenever you.
Okay, if you can go down to, I, I, let's do the close-up first, if you don't, if everyone's okay with that, go down one more.
Yeah, there seems to be just a slight delay.
Okay, got you, got you.
Yeah.
Got you, got you.
No worries. All right, one more after this?
Yeah, one more. There we go. Okay. All right, so, um, and I, I did want to clarify, we, it has been referred to as an enclosure. It's really a, and I'll probably more accurately called the patio cover. We don't intend to enclose in any way. Um, as you see on the screen, the structure itself is built, built from a non-combustible powder-coated aluminum. And we, we use that material. It's, it's, uh, longevity is phenomenal, as well as the finishes remain with the powder coating. It's a really resilient finish. The other thing nice about is you don't, uh, whenever steel is used, we tend to, you tend to see after the years go by, somehow, some way rust can, it's created, even if it's steel, painted steel, eventually rust will get through and then you'll start to see rust stains on the concrete. And in this case, it would, you know, seep into the sidewalk. The, although aluminum, over a long, long periods of time, does have some corrosion if it's exposed. Um, you still don't get the rust stains or any of that color, but the fact that we're powder coated with a heavy powder coating, it's actually warranted by the manufacturer for thirty years. Uh, and so that's pretty profound. Um, so, and the columns are listed are there, as you see them. Uh, in particular, important to note that the columns are contained with the existing railing. So the railing you're seeing there, that's the depiction of the patio as it exists now, so we are not encroaching beyond that, that railing. So, which would then follow that there's no, you know, no issues with, uh, distance from sidewalk property line, et cetera, were contained within that approved fencing. The, as far as building the structure, uh, we will, we will be boring footings, as this is a structure fully designed to handle cold wind loads and snow loads. Those are all calculated and we're provided with our submission. Um, so, uh, of course, you would need the footings and, and, uh, that would support our columns. You'll notice that there's columns against the building, which means that we are not attaching to the building and doing anything to the current fascia of the building itself. The, probably the most prominent feature of this patio cover is that it opens. Uh, and it's really a rain and sun management feature of this patio cover. If you look at the top, and, and I should, if you, pretty obvious, but it's a two-tone, uh, color selection. Uh, that's, I bar Louis, there are numerous ones of these around the country, and they go with the black, the satin black framing and the what we call clay colored louvers. Now, the louvers that are depicted in the drawing are pretty, it's a pretty accurate rendition. Right now, those louvers are, uh, opened, uh, in the open position, standing vertically. Um, the, when they are operated, they can go to actually beyond vertical, which is about a hundred and thirty-five degrees, all the way to fully closed. And there's two benefits of being able to do that, and you know, the intent here is to keep this area a patio as much as, as we can, meaning, that's why people are out there, all the patrons are out there to enjoy the outdoors. And if, if you had a solid cover over the patio, it would, you know, you're taking away a little bit of sort of the reason why people want to be on patios. And that is to be able, when the, the weather is nice, you want to have the sunshine is, you know, if it's not in their face, and I'll then, I'll get back to that notion in a minute. And enjoy the stars, the blue sky, and be comfortable all at the same time. So the louvers that are operated with a remote control, handheld remote control or a smartphone app can be adjusted to any position. Why would you move them to any position other than open and closed? Well, that is so that the sun can be managed. You know, I'm sure we'll see many, many patios in the city that are uncovered. Uh, or even with a, a fully openable roof where the, where they say the roof completely slides out of the way, let's say, in a retractable awning scenario. The sun still becomes a problem, because if you don't manage the sun, then you're going to have people with the sun in their eyes trying to enjoy the outdoors, and it's a problem. And I'm sure you've seen, you know, patio umbrellas that combat that, so if you don't have some way to manage the sun, then you're going to generally, you'll see the, the owners of these bars, restaurants, open, bring out pa, uh, umbrellas to take care of the sun, not for rain, but for sun. These louvers can be open to any position to guide that sun, not, not into people's eyes, so we, the direct sunlight angular sun is omitted, and angular sun, for instance, coming into the side of the structure would be the, the sun, at certain times of the day, they would hit the people right in the eyes if you happen to be facing outward. Well, this, these louvers will then block angular sun by putting him in some of a position at vertical or around vertical. And then as the days, as the hours change, as the angle of the sun changes, you can adjust louvers to make sure that you get as much light as possible, and even some interesting effects, light effects on the wall, you'll see there, which is very interesting and, and very, uh, it's pleasant for the, uh, I could, for the clients or the patrons to see that. And then when the, when the weather gets bad, me maybe too windy or raining, once the water starts coming down or the snow, the louvers can be shut. And then each of those, what we call louver bays, you'll count five of them there. Each set of bays, they operate independently. So those are, will close in, in the, in the event of rain, and then the perimeter of each of those, there is a gutter system, and it collects the water, and we bring it down a downspout, down one of those center, uh, one of those columns and the four columns in the front. The, uh, the other, uh, feature is that when it gets, uh, too cold out, of course, then we have, uh, time to say, okay, maybe we can't use the patio anymore. We can shut the louvers, and since they are rated for the snow loads, the cold snow loads, no other action has to be taken other than close the louvers and forget about them until winter. So there's no, uh, danger of, you know, snow building up and causing a problem, you know, with, with louvers or any part of the structure, uh, being damaged or anything like that. It's fully, uh, sized and engineered for full snow load. So, uh, the one thing about, besides the rain, the wind too, is a lot of people don't realize that wind isn't, you might think it's always just horizontal, but it's not. A lot of wind comes in from above and swirls around. So the other benefit is that we do a lot of wind protection in a scenario like this, in a structure like this, even though the sides aren't covered, as, as it's shown. The last thing I'll say is that the motor operation of these, uh, bays are, uh, it's a low voltage system, so there's not any, uh, line voltage or heavy voltage out there that might cause a problem in, you know, seeing weather throughout, over the years. If you could then go down, I'll, we'll show, if you could go, uh, down one slide, please. We'll give you a few other views of this. There you can see the five bays quite clearly. And again, the, the fence, now where you notice that the column placement is such that we don't block any of the current access through the gates of the current railing. Now, I think when this was first proposed on the other side, I may be wrong on this, Kevin, but I thought that that we, there were some issues on, when it was around the other side of the building, that there weren't a sufficient amount of walkway, but anyway, the, the fact is, what we're looking at now is we're behind that railing that's already there, so that can tell you. Okay, if you can go down one more, I think there's another angle, you can kind of see it from below, there you go. So that's what the patrons would see from above. It's a really nice effect. Um, again, taking advantage of the stars, the blue sky, and anytime the, the weather is reasonable, you can be out there enjoying it, and even when people are out there and it starts to rain, they can simply, there's a rain sensor on the device. So even automatically, if it starts to rain, we can, the roof will close. So the idea is that the patrons can remain out there unless it gets really nasty outside, so. Okay, I think there's one more after this, Alan. Or is that the last one?
Uh, that might be the next one. It doesn't seem to be forwarding anymore.
Okay, okay, then if we can go to the second slide, and then we'll finish with the first slide.
Okay.
So slide number two, and then slide one, one will be after that. Okay, uh, I think that's, that's actually number three possibly, or is that, e- either way, we create, we were asked, and we created some renderings that pulled you away, so you gotta feel for how our structure, our, our patio cover fits in with the neighborhood. Coincidentally, of course, or not coincidentally, I uh, probably is the fact that the building next door across the walkway there is the same, uh, same building, I assume was part of the same development. And so you, you can see that the Burgatory folks, I don't know who selected the black color first, but I think it, it's a very good compliment. And I'll ask Doug Ross, who's on with us from our office, who was involved in analyzing the neighborhood to see how we fit in with the neighborhood, and that would bring us to, uh, slide number one. And there is some verbiage on that slide, if, if you've not read it, Doug will probably pretty much go through what's on, on that slide, so if you can, that's, that's another one that's further away, but go, go to number one. You can pass through, and there we go. Okay, can I answer to just to give us your thoughts were on this?
Everyone hear me, okay? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. As you'll see, looking down the alleyway in between the two buildings, um, you have another structure that is, first of all, all the other structures on the neighborhood, they all seem to be following the satin black color base, what we're also going with, so there's a nice aesthetic consistency to that. But throughout the street, we've got a variety of different types of structures from some's with, some with, uh, pitched, uh, shed roof, some with a flat roof, some with, um, open air, um, curtains, walls, a whole combination. So, obviously, we don't want everything to look the same. We think what we're providing here is a complimentary look to the rest of the street while also maintaining some, an independent feel, um, something that is maintaining the brand integrity of, of Bar Louis. But like I said, still complimentary to the rest of what's going on. It's very important to offer a, some diversity in the different types of seating. So you can see across with Burgatory, there are, um, they've got one patio with umbrellas behind them. They've got another one with a flat roof and curtain walls, and then, not sure, Burn, I believe, is the name of the other restaurant down the way that has, uh, that's coming off onto the same street side with a large pitched roof. Um, so this adds some nice, like I said, diversity to the whole area. Um, and, uh, we feel this is very welcoming, and it's going to be, uh, a, a, a great enjoyment for, for the area.
Great, is that the end of your presentation?
It is.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, we take no public testimony. Are there questions or comments for this applicant? Nope. Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, we'll see you in two weeks, and probably in two weeks. You probably don't need to give us as much detail on some of the operability of things, because it's not something that we're going to. We probably don't need as much detail. Yes, Holly, yes, question.
I have, have they left?
Nope, they're still here.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, okay, great.
Sorry, I couldn't get my sound to work. Uh, two questions. Uh, is there sufficient area within the, uh, or, uh, within the, uh, area enclosed by the rail for a person in a wheelchair to enter if he or she wanted to dine within that enclosure?
I'm sorry, as far as accessing the patio itself?
Yeah, actually, yeah, accents, accessing the area enclosed by the railing, yes.
Yeah, um, well, uh, the railing does have, uh, uh, disability access, and we, uh, uh, made sure we didn't, the post-locations do not interfere with those existing.
Okay. That's what I'm, okay, but thank you. And the number two, uh, just, I just want to check on the adjacent sidewalk. Is there, like, say, at least five feet of, of unencumbered area, not, uh, covered with sandwich boards or anything, or planters, or anything like that, a person who is usually using a wheelchair or a visually impaired person could walk safely? Do they have that?
Yes. Yeah, well, uh, uh, nothing will be beyond the railing itself. So, um, there's no issue there, as far as on the inside of the railing?
No, for the outside, I'm talking about the, the adjacent sidewalks. Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no interferences.
Yeah, you're not going to put sandwich boards up or something like that.
Oh, I, no, no, yeah, good question. No, no, I, I talked to the client about that. No, I made that clear to them. We, we made it our focus to stay inside that railing, and that's as far as they can go.
I think that's great. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for those questions, Commissioner Dick. Any other questions for this applicant?
I, I, can I ask one? So in two weeks, will we have the same format?
Except you'll be presenting during the hearing portion, yep.
Okay.
I'll be following up after this meeting.
Yeah, I think staff can help you understand what, what you can, uh, trim, so. Okay, great, thank you, commissioners. Uh, that ends the briefing portion of our meeting. We'll reconvene at two o'clock for the hearing portion. See you in ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, go ahead and turn your cameras on as you come back in. Okay, we'll just wait for Commissioner Dick, and then we'll get started. Okay, we'll just wait for Commissioner Dick and then we'll get started.
Commissioner Dick may not realize she doesn't have her camera on.
There she is. Hello, Holly. Welcome back, Commissioners. So let's officially begin the hearing portion of our meeting. The hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting is the time that we hear cases that are presented for action by the planning commission. During this hearing portion, we will take public testimony and I'll give instructions after each item is heard. Welcome to our applicant presenters. Reminder to clearly describe which slide you're presenting to to assist those who may be participating via audio. And I'll do a roll call attendance again to make sure everybody's microphones are working. Commissioner Askey.
Hi.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Oh, great. Nice to see you free. Commissioner Brown. Okay, Commissioner Burton Falk.
Present.
Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo.
Here.
Commissioner Mandor here, Commissioner O'Neill. Okay. Thank you. We have five items on our agenda. I'll read through all five. First is approval of commission minutes. Second is correspondence. Third is item C, excuse me, item C is hearing in action. Item D is plan of lots and item E is director's report. We began with the approval of commission minutes, Commissioners. We are in receipt of minutes from 8th of February 2022. Assuming you have reviewed them and forwarded any changes, do I have a motion to approve as forwarded to us?
Some of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Second.
Again.
Commissioner Askey. Okay, I'll do roll call again. Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Blackwell's.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mingo.
I.
Commissioner Mandor, I. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to items of correspondence. And I have to find my window, so excuse me one minute. Sorry, I accidentally closed this window, so reopening it here. Okay. We're in receipt of the following items of correspondence regarding DCP ZDR 2021 03233, address 6100 Avenue. I think there's a name missing. It says 6100 Avenue, but it doesn't have a name of the avenue, so that is in receipt of correspondence from Rob Foffman. I think that's supposed to be Penn Avenue.
Yes, Commissioner, that's Penn.
Okay, great. Thank you. Regarding Council Bill 2021 1906 and DCP MPZC 2021 01666 Oakland Crossings, we're in receipt of correspondence from Mark Thomas, President of Pittsburgh Regional Alliance, and Eric Day. Regarding DCP HN 2021 01137 Historic Nomination at the Tito House, we're in receipt of correspondence from Brittany McDonald, Executive Director, Uptown Partners of Pittsburgh. And that will take us to second. Hearing and action. We have two items on hearing and action. I'll read through both of them. Item one under hearing and actions, DCP ZDR 2021 14048, address 414 First Avenue, demolition of single-story structure in the rear of parcel and exterior alterations in the downtown neighborhood. And item two is DCP ZDR 2021 14042, address 407 Cinema Drive, exterior renovations to the existing structure in South Side Works and South Side Flats neighborhood. We begin with item one, DCP ZDR 2021 14048, address 414 First Avenue, Mr. Koenak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Kevin Koenak with the Department of City Planning. This is application DCP ZDR 2022 14048 for a project development plan for demolition and exterior alterations. The proposed demolition is of a single-story structure situated on parcel 1 dash M dash 55 dash 1 and located within the interior of the block. The exterior alterations are proposed for the building situated on parcel 1 dash M dash 54 and facing First Avenue. A virtual development activities meeting, DAM, with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership was held on January 13th 2022. A copy of that DAM report is attached to your hearing and action reports. Staff design review is not required for the proposed exterior alterations. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment as part of this project. And applicant responses to section 922 dot 10 dot E dot 2 review criteria are also attached to your hearing report. The recommended the recommended motion by staff is that the planning commission approves project development plan number DCP ZDR 2021 14048 with the following conditions. That final construction plans, including interim site plans and elevation, shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicant for a sound check.
Kent O'Mory, Security Architects.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and roll into the presentation then?
Please.
The photograph that you're seeing in front of you is a context shot taken from Fort Pitt Boulevard, the building that my client owns is the white in the center of the photograph. There's a six-story building, a four-story building, and two single-story buildings. The structure that we're looking to demolish, if you could go to the next page, is shown bubbled in red on the lower left. The site plan shown above shows those four buildings, the sixth floor and the two single stories. The structure that we're looking to demolish is in pretty poor condition. It is a vinyl-sided addition. We haven't done a lot of research on it, but it does not really contribute to any of the buildings on site. In fact, the roof is failing and it is damaging a portion of the building that it's attached to. And just this morning, we received a violation notice from PLI for the condition of the roof, so the demolition is fairly timely. In terms of the exterior alterations, if we could go to the next slide. This is the first avenue side. We are looking to restore the four-story and six-story structure. We don't have any plans of yet on the remaining single-story structure, but what we would like to get approval for today in terms of the exterior renovation is the replacement in kind, more or less of all of the windows from the second story up. And then rebuilding of the first floor storefronts with new materials. There's an existing photograph that's a little bit small in the presentation, but this was formerly an electrical equipment and switchgear distribution warehouse. The existing storefronts are a little bit beat up, so we're looking to refresh and renew this facade. Any questions?
Okay, is that the end of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we do take public testimony. If there's anyone who would like to speak with regards to this application, please raise your hand and staff will let you into the hearing room.
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, great. At this time, are there questions or comments from the commission? Hearing now, do I have a motion to approve as stated in our reports? So moved, Commissioner Askey, do I have a second?
I can, Commissioner Mingo.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Okay, Commissioner Askey.
I.
Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mingo.
I.
Commissioner Mandor, I. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item for hearing and action is DCP ZDR 2021 1402, no, 14042, address 407 Cinema Drive, exterior renovations to an existing structure in South Side Works and South Side Flats neighborhood is Kramer.
Good afternoon. This is Anne Kramer, a member of the zoning division of the Department of City Planning, sorry. I wanted to do a quick sound check with our applicant, Randy Roberti. I see that you're here. Can you just say hello, make sure we can hear you?
Hello, everyone.
Thank you. Let me give a brief introduction and then Randy can walk us through his presentation. So this is an application for final land development plan, and this is for interior and exterior renovations at 407 Cinema Drive. This application includes improvements to the exterior, including a portion of the structure that that will change out the exterior materials, the doors, the windows, and create a rooftop deck and some updates to the outdoor sidewalks dining. The signs are shown in the content in the presentation for context, but they aren't part of this application. They will be part of a future application for staff to review. There were no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. For this case, the proposed exterior design was reviewed by the design staff and found to be sufficient. The development activities meeting was held virtually on January 20th, 2022 with the South Side Works Community Council, that is the registered community organization for this area. The summary report is attached to your staff report. The applicant's written responses to the final land development plan review criteria are also attached to your staff report. So with that, staff recommends approval of this final land development plan with the following conditions, and these are our standard conditions, that the final construction documents, including the site plan, landscape plan, and the elevations shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. Pardon me. And the second, that Domi shall review the final plans and issue the necessary approvals prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. And with that, I'll turn our attention over to Randy to walk us through his presentation.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys having us today. The project is for PINS Mechanical Company and kind of an entertainment venue, duck pin bowling, arcade gaming. Can you switch to the next page for me? It'll be going into the old movie theater in the South Side Works District. There will be taking the northeast half of the building. There is three stories. They're taking the first and second floors. Next page, please. So these are some of the existing photography and photos of the surrounding context. It's right across the street, the primary entry. We're right across the street from Cheesecake Factory and the new dog park that's going in the median across from Off Bar House. Next page. You can see the first floor plan. The cameras, little camera symbols around the perimeter of the 3D views we'll be reviewing are shown on the right, just for context, existing red brick building. Next page, please. So left is the existing conditions, right is new. Couple exterior items I want to mention. The existing, the patio we're showing is existing. We're just replacing the railing with new. So the extent of that is as is. We are removing one of the storefronts at the primary entry along the along the west facade and recessing that in to create more of a prominent entry. It's tucked in. And then you can see on the second floor plan, on the lower right-hand corner, the rooftop terrace that will be located where the existing mechanical platform is and will allow the interior to flow out to that that exterior terrace. Next page, please. Close up of that entry that we're creating on the first floor. We're adding some indoor-outdoor doors to the to the to the existing entry tower adjacent to the patio to allow the interior to follow up that. And then recessing that entry on the bottom side of that plane, you can see. And then there's that rooftop terrace with wood pavers on the right-hand side. Next page. We are integrating a good amount of vegetation throughout the scheme. Both inside, it'll be visible through the indoor-outdoor windows and doors and in planters up on the terrace and within that recessed opening. So bringing some greenery in to contrast the building. Next page. In terms of elevations, you can see we are leaving the brick but painting it a, you'll see in the 3D renderings here, we're proposing to paint the brick a darker color, a charcoal color. That'll contrast the rest of the building and make it feel more pedestrian in scale and break it down so that it's not such a large monolithic building. And it'll also make that greenery pop and become a focal point, which will just be very, very inviting and warm. Next page, please. Zoomed in elevation, you can see the indoor-outdoor window systems. We're putting on the entry tower on the left-hand side of the top elevation. There is that recessed entry experience we're creating in the center of that top of the top elevation with a canopy that'll define that with some simple signage. And then again, on the on the bottom elevation, you'll see the two operable indoor-outdoor doors. Next page, please. So quick quick rendering of what we're proposing, just a simple paint over the existing brick to really make it pop and contrast and and become a little more walkable and pedestrian forward rather than one big monolithic building. Next page. From the south, looking towards the entry, you can see the way that rooftop patio floats above the the entry and becomes a great visual from from the pedestrian scale. Next page, please. Kind of an aerial from the entry corner. Just giving you a little bit of a different different context. And then next page, please. This one's from the from the side of the building, north side of the building, looking looking back at the existing windows to showing how the, excuse me, painted building contrasts nicely with the street trees and vegetation. Next page. And finally, an aerial, just kind of giving you an overview of that second floor exterior terrace, the entry and everything working as a whole. And with that, I'll I'll turn it back to you guys.
Okay, great. That's the end of the presentation. Thank you. At this time, we take public testimonies for anyone who would like to speak with regards to this application.
Barbara Rudiak, I've given you permission to speak. Can you please introduce yourself and spell your name?
My name is Barbara Rudiak, R U D I A K, and I'm the president of the South Side Community Council, the registered community organization for the South Side Flats. And as mentioned, this project was reviewed by the community on January 20th, 2022. And I would like to say that we are in full support of the plans for the PINS Mechanical Company and feel that it will be a wonderful and welcome addition to the many changes that are occurring at South Side Works. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this application?
I'm not seeing any other hands right now.
Thank you. At this time, we have questions or comments from the commission.
I just have my same question again.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Do you plan to make sure that the sidewalk adjacents to your section of the building are kept free and clear for pedestrian access?
Absolutely.
You're not planning any planters in the middle of the sidewalk or anything like that?
Nope. The existing railing will stay as is. We're just replacing it with a new, not as, not as damaged railing and. And other than that, nothing, nothing on the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Are there any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve as stated in our reports?
Some of them.
So moved, Commissioner Dick, second.
Second, Commissioner Blackwell.
Thank you very much. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor. Aye. Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to our.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's our last hearing in action item. We move on to plan of lots. Mr. Shepke, can we batch these? And I would ask Commissioners to see if there's anything that we need to pull out on your behalf.
We can batch all of them except for the last application for the Hayes Consolidated Subdivision, which needs to be taken separately.
Okay, Commissioners, is there anything else we need to pull out? Nope. Okay, so I will read through eight items that will be taken as a batch vote. Item one is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one zero seven Broadhead Fording Road Major Consolidation Two Ferrywood. Item two is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one five eight Carnival Way Minor Subdivision Allentown. Item three is DCP Lot twenty twenty one zero one three one seven. Address thirty four thirty four Bethaven Street Minor Subdivision Polish Hill. Item four is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one seven seven Cohen Street Minor Subdivision Overbrook. Item five is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one seven nine Frankstown Avenue Minor Subdivision Harmer. Item six is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one nine four. Address South Eighteenth Street Lot Line Revision South Side Slopes. Item seven is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero zero one one seven Lafayette Avenue Minor Subdivision in Perry South. And item eight is DCP Lot twenty twenty two zero one three three two Harmer Street Minor Subdivision Polish Hill. Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. The first item is the Broadhead Fording Road consolidation. This is the consolidation of. Four parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have four hundred sixty feet of frontage on Broadhead Fording Road. Two hundred ninety eight feet of frontage on Von Bernher Street. Four hundred eighteen feet of frontage on Village Road. It would be one hundred seventy seven thousand one hundred square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the planning commission on February eighth twenty twenty two. The recommended motion is to approve the Matthews Avenue consolidation. The next item is the Carnival Way consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have forty five feet of frontage on Carnival Way. It'd be three thousand nine hundred square feet in area. A two story structure is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the Carnival Way consolidation. The next item is the three four three four Beethoven Street subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have forty four feet of frontage on Bigelow Boulevard. It would be two thousand two hundred square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have forty four feet of frontage on Beethoven Street. It would be two thousand two hundred square feet in area. One house and a billboard are located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the three four three four Beethoven Street subdivision. The next item is the Cohen Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. Proposed lot one would have sixty five feet of frontage on Cohen Street. It would be nine thousand seven hundred ninety seven square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property and staff's recommended motion is to approve the Cohen Street consolidation. The next item is the Frankstown Avenue consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels to one parcel. The proposed lot would have forty five feet of frontage on Dagmar Street. It would be four thousand four hundred and ten square feet in area. A one story building is on the subject property and staff's recommended motion is to approve the Frankstown Avenue consolidation. The next item is the South Eighteenth Street Lot Line Revision. This is a lot line revision involving two parcels. The revised lot one would have fifty feet of frontage on South Eighteenth Street. It would be five thousand nine hundred fifty eight square feet in area. The revised lot two would have thirty eight feet of frontage on South Eighteenth Street. It would be three thousand three hundred thirty seven square feet in area. No new parcels are created in this plan. The subject property is currently vacant and the staff's recommended motion is to approve the South Eighteenth Street. Lot Line Revision. The next item is the Lafayette Avenue consolidation. This is consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed law would have a one hundred twenty eight feet of frontage on Lafayette Avenue. It would be twelve thousand nine hundred seventy nine square feet in area. A paramedic station is located on the subject property and staff's recommended motion is to approve the Lafayette Avenue consolidation. And the next item is the three three four Harmar Street subdivision. This is a subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have no street frontage in the one thousand seven hundred fifty square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have twenty five feet of frontage on Harmar Street. It would be one thousand two hundred fifty square feet in area. The zoning board of adjustment approved variances to allow the proposed subdivision. Two houses are located on the subject property and staff's recommended motion is to approve the three three four Harmar Street subdivision. Thank you.
At this time, we take public testimonies. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to items one through eight?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. Just one?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, just one. On the first one. The, out in Ferrywood, the Matthews Avenue one, is this in preparation for a major housing development?
It is. The proposal is a multi-unit residential housing development on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve items one through eight as stated in our reports?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell, second.
Second, Commissioner Askey.
Thank you. Okay, take a roll call vote. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor. Aye. That takes us to item nine, which is DCP Lot twenty twenty one zero one six three four. Hayes Run Major Subdivision one in the Hayes neighborhood. Mr. Shepke.
This is the subdivision of two parcels into three parcels. Lot one. Would be six hundred thirty three acres in area. Lot two would have frontage on Beck's Run Road and would be two thousand four hundred thirty four square feet in area. Lot three would have frontage on Beck's Run and be thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety five square feet in area. Lot three would be located entirely within the boundaries of the borough of Baldwin. The subject property is currently vacant parkland and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve. The Hayes Run subdivision and schedule final review on March eighth twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to testify with regards to item nine?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve item nine as stated in our reports? So moved. Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, second.
Second, Commissioner Mingo.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mandor. Aye. Okay, that takes us to the end of the plan of lots. Commissioners, we do not have a director's report today, so that also takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there anything that staff needs to share before we adjourn? All right, nothing. Okay, great. All right, thanks, guys. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay, thank you, guys. See you.
Thank you.
I'll make one note. This is February twenty second twenty twenty two. And we are ending at a two.
Should have ended at two twenty two. That would have been great.
We are where we are.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, guys. Take care.
All right, have a good two weeks.